Welcome everyone to the October 2022 meeting of the Hadley Public Schools. May I have a motion to open this meeting?
Well moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll start with adjustments to the agenda. Annie, you want to take us through any of them?
Yes, there will not be a report from CES, from Tara Bruger tonight as the CES rep, but she's not with us this evening. We do have someone from CES to speak to the item on the agenda, but Tara's report will wait until next month.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, we're moving next to public comment. As a reminder, please keep your remarks to three minutes or under. We won't go into discussion or acknowledge necessarily comments that are made, but we will factor that into our thinking as we progress with this meeting. So if you'd like to make a comment, please go ahead and raise your digital hand and we will unmute your volume. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the agenda.
Excellent. So we begin this evening by recognizing three Hopkins Academy students. This is by far probably my favorite school committee meeting of the year. There are so many phenomenal students to recognize. Tonight, we are going to be recognizing three exceptional young women from Hopkins Academy seniors. And I'm going to start by telling you about the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. This is an award that is presented to a student who has distinguished him or herself in the pursuit of excellence during his or her high school career. I asked for recommendations from our faculty and the person that was nominated is Pema Ziddick. Pema ranks first in her extremely competitive class. She has worked very hard to balance difficult courses with an extensive list of extracurricular activities and accomplishments. She's interested in studying international relations and has worked previously as a Tibetan classroom assistant, assisted instructors in teaching the Tibetan language and a volunteer English tutor with Ukrainian refugees. Pema is a member of our early college high school pathway. She will graduate with 12 credits through this program from Greenfield Community College. She has taken additional courses as well and earned additional college credits. Congratulations, Pema, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, congratulations. We have two other folks to recognize this evening. The National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning is presented to high school seniors who have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served as positive role models for the student body. The recipients of the award also exemplify admirable character and accomplishment. We have two recipients this year. Taylor Berry. Taylor is a strong athlete, a leader and an excellent student. She's an exceptional role model for younger peers. She's worked extremely hard over her high school career to challenge herself and at the same time making sure she took courses that interested her. She also is a member of our early college high school pathway and she too will graduate with 12 credits from Greenfield Community College. Congratulations, Taylor, well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And our third recipient is Brooke Rochon. Brooke excels academically and is also a pillar in the community. She's helpful, respectful and another excellent role model for our younger peers. She is currently completing a teaching assistantship and working as a laboratory assistant with our forensic science and chemistry teacher. Brooke is responsible for accurately preparing labs and helping younger students with lab objectives. She too is a member of the early college high school pathway and she will also graduate with 12 credits from Greenfield Community College. Brooke, congratulations. And so we could read and speak pages about every single one of you. I say this from the bottom of my heart. My job is better and wonderful because of the students just like all of you. I am so, so, so grateful to have the opportunity to lead a district where superstars like you all just shine. So thank you for everything you contribute and thank you for who you are and we're really proud of you.
Congratulations again to all the students and families. We are very proud of you. Unfortunately, Taylor's video wouldn't work. She is trying to come in from home, but she does say thank you, as you heard.
Congratulations.
Terrific, all right, thank you so much. We are going to move to the next item in the agenda. And that is, let's see, the approval of CES Capital Reserve Fund. And we have a guest here from CES, Dr. Gazda, the Executive Director. And let's make sure that Todd is able to unmute himself and speak. Yes, he is co-host. Todd, are you there?
I am.
Great, welcome.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the committee tonight. In June of this past year, June of 2020, the CES Board voted to establish a capital reserve account. Now, Annie, was, were you able to get the information sheet to the committee?
Yes, they do. It's linked into the agenda. The committee and the public can see the information for board members of motion language for school committee vote.
Excellent, thank you. So I'll keep my comments concise and I won't repeat everything on the information sheet. But the information sheet was put together for board members to have conversations with their school committees in order to explain kind of the background for the creation of this account. So the creation of the account by the board is really the first step. According to our collaborative agreement and the regulations, once the board votes to establish the account, it must be approved by two-thirds of our member school districts. So we have 37 member districts at this, right now. And so that number is 25 that need to approve the creation of this account. Now, the creation of this account involves no additional cost to Hadley or any other of our member districts. The purpose of this account is to allow us to plan in a thoughtful manner for capital needs of the organization as we go forward. So in the document, I've outlined some of the needs that this account can be used for. In 2021, in the fall of 2021, we began a process and we hired an outside consultant to do a full analysis of both the buildings we own. We own the building at 97 Holly Street and we own the building over on Pleasant Street where HEC Academy is. So both of those buildings are owned by the collaborative. So the company came through and they went through and we found in general that our buildings were in decent shape. However, for the past 30 or so years, we haven't done a lot of upkeep, maintenance, modernizing. And so the purpose for this account is to really take care of needs going forward as well as ensure that our buildings are brought up to, you know, current expectations for programs where we have both kids in and for office space where our central office staff work. So in looking at this, things that we need to have done in our buildings, HVAC work. We did do the necessary work to kind of get it where it needed to be for the pandemic, but it was kind of patchwork. At this point, what we really need to do is renew and revitalize our HVAC systems, both in 97 Holly Street and HEC Academy with an eye towards environmentally mentally conscious alternatives as well. So we're going to explore those options. But that's just one example. The other thing is we're moving forward with renovations at 97 Holly Street. Hasn't been painted in years. The carpet, if anybody's been in that building anytime recently, is a really strange brown color. And so, you know, trying to make it an inviting workspace for our employees. It must have been, so just as many of you are probably aware, I began at CES a little over a year ago now. And one of the, it must have been about right around this time last year, I began the process of trying to get us back to normal and try to get everybody back into the office. And it should really come as no surprise that I experienced some resistance to making, to having that occur. And so one of the things I looked at and one of the things we began to analyze is, you know, why? Why are we trying to force everybody back into the office? In looking at the services we'd provided to our member districts over the past two years, two plus years of the pandemic, especially those divisions that, you know, worked out in the field such as 21st Century. A lot of our professional development, our consultants and the people who do trainings in the field, early childhood. And then things like math migrant and our special educators in Special Education Surrogate Program. These have been really working remotely for two years, providing even better services for our constituents and saving money. And so one of the things we did was rather than try to force everybody back to work and back into the office, we decided to kind of go the opposite way and leaned into creating a hybrid model of operating. Benefits to that are examples, you know, it helps for recruitment and retention of employees. We can expand our candidate pool to both help increase the quality of candidates in the pool and the diversity of candidates in the pool. So that was one element. The other thing is it allowed us to drop some lease space. We were leasing space at 123 Holly Street for about $60,000 a year. Who was in that space? Early childhood, 21st Century and early childhood, 21st Century. Oh my gosh, I'm blanking on the third group. 21st Century and it's not coming to me right now. But we, rather than force them back in, we let go of those leases at the end of the year when they expired and we supported those employees in working fully remote from home for those divisions. Now, some, there are some positions where that's just not possible. The teachers in our SEIS and DYS contracts, they have to be in classrooms teaching kids. People who were running trainings in districts, they have to be in, you know, in the districts running trainings. People who do face-to-face work for CES for trainings have to be where that training is occurring. So, you know, those type of services still have to be face-to-face and we recognize that. But we took a look to see where could we build some flexibility. We established a group to look at this and really kind of explore this hybrid model of doing this. And we're in the process of kind of creating that. This capital plan supports that transition, increasing technology in our conference room downstairs so that we can offer robust hybrid professional development where people can be present in person and face-to-face and have a similar experience for that professional development. We're looking to really take a look at HEC Academy and redesign the space inside that building to serve the needs of today's educational environment and today's students. Look, right now, if you've been in there recently, it's kind of a strange configuration. And as over the years, walls were put up, offices created, you know, a redesign of that space is necessary to really take a look at how we can reshape that, to be able to add additional programming, an additional space for additional programming as well as meet the needs of the students in that program now. So all this is kind of wrapped up into the decision-making process, but we want to be able to approach this in a thoughtful manner. And so that's why we're coming to you today. And that's why we went to the board in June to propose a capital reserve account to allow us to plan financially for these changes that we're making. Initially, the influx of dollars into the capital reserve account will be from the forgiveness of a payroll protection loan that CES got during the pandemic. That loan allowed us to continue operations, kept staff employed and kind of filled the revenue gap that a lot of places experienced at the beginning of the pandemic. Unlike school districts that, and this was, this was a big change for me, transitioning from a superintendent to essentially running a business, was the fact that we don't get all our money upfront. As a superintendent, I got $32 million a year from the town and state to operate my schools. And so you draw down on that money over the course of the year and you kind of knew, you know, as you were getting towards the end of the year, that, you know, money was running, getting tight. For us, we have to earn, we take our best estimates at what revenues are going to be, what expenses are going to be. And then we have to, over the course of the year, make sure that those revenues come in. Unlike school systems, we don't have access to MSBA funds. We don't have access to any of the HVAC money that the state has made available for schools. We don't get Chapter 70 money. All our money comes in from tuitions, revenues, contracts and grants. So it's, you know, essentially business that we generate. So this, the forgiveness of that payroll protection loan allowed us to pay off the mortgages in both 97 Holly Street and the Pleasant Street Building. So we own those buildings free and clear now. So now we have to set those buildings up to serve the needs of the organization and our member districts for the next 50 years. So that's why I'm coming here tonight.
Very good, thank you, Todd. My, I'm going to open it up to questions from the committee members before we take a vote on the article. As a reminder, that viewing public, the Board of CES is comprised of one school committee member from every school district that is a member. And so some things require fuller vote than just the folks who show up to your board meeting. And this is one of those things. The question that I had was around the Payroll Protection Act. As I understood, it is very clearly designated for just a few things. Payroll, rent, lease related to building. There may be one other thing, but it's really narrow. And so I had questions about how that could result in additional revenue. But I think what you explained was that the revenue from your fee-based activities and your grants did come in in time. And because you used it initially for payroll, it qualified as no strings attached money that you could then keep. Is that an accurate way to summarize?
That is accurate. So it basically, you know, when the pandemic hit, everything kind of shut down. You know, remember, you know, March to June of 2020, we just simply shut down. So when we shut down, we don't have revenues coming in. Now, we, so we were able to utilize the payroll protection money through that period and others and, you know, into the fall to keep people employed, to keep them working. We did some things during that time to really help support districts. We put together a paraprofessional training for, for paras in districts that they could tap into. Because districts were looking for ways to give them something to do while students were fully remote. And so we put something together for that. We continued trainings. We did a work through Casey Dagel with Google and some other things to help support districts. But you're right, that filled the gap. And then as revenues came in, we set that revenue aside to be able to pay back that loan. And then when the federal government forgave that loan, and by the way, we had to document all of this and then we had to submit that documentation as part of the forgiveness for that loan. And so we had to document all of that extensively. And then when that was forgiven, the funds we had set aside were then freed up. And we were able, we were able to utilize them in this manner. And they count essentially as revenue for FY '22.
Very good, thank you. Other questions from committee members?
Hey Todd, this is Paul Pfeifer. So you said that PPP helped to pay off the buildings and now they're on free and clear. But then you said this reserve fund would be at no cost to us. Help me understand the math. So how are you going to calculate the reserve fund?
So the money from that, so in other words, it's, we're not going to increase fees in order to put more money in this reserve fund. The cap on the reserve fund is about $5 million. Initially, we don't anticipate putting that much money in there. Quite frankly, our fund balance that we have, which think of it as the collaborative saving account, has been really low for years, which means our cash on hand has been really low. And so we've had to even, you know, tap into lines of credit at times to pay employees until our revenues caught up with the services we'd been providing. There's always a slight delay because we bill for services and so we got to do the services, got to pay the people, but then we have to get the revenue in. So sometimes this is delay. We have been operating with a fund balance that's really low and quite frankly, has made Desi a little nervous. And so we want to bring that up to, you know, to more towards typically where it is, which is around 20, 25% is what you're, of operating budget, which is what you're allowed to have in there. And so we anticipate probably putting in to, I'm thinking somewhere between two, maybe a little over 2 million into the capital reserve account initially. The reason that the cap is 5 million is because we're beginning to explore the potential of a, some type of a capital campaign fundraising in order to generate more funds and, you know, through philanthropic donations and other, other ways. So we wanted to have a little space in there so that we didn't have to keep coming back to increase the cap space. So we put, we felt was a reasonable amount of space in there in case there is a relatively large donation. It's important to note, no money can go into or out of that capital reserve account without approval of the Board of Directors. So it's not like something I can just, you know, pull money from here and there. It has to be approved by the Board of Directors in order for money to come into and out of that account. So we're not looking to raise tuitions in order to cover the cost or to put more excess money into that account. Your fees right now are about $3.50 per student is what you pay to the collaborative. We're not looking to increase that so that we can put more money into our capital reserve account. So that's kind of what I meant by not, there's no cost to the districts. We're not looking to increase the rates or fees in order to fill that up, to take care of our capital project. Without the payroll protection loan money, this is what, it's things like that we would have to begin to explore. And so this gives us kind of a freedom from that. And it's, it really is kind of a one-time chance for the organization to really position itself for the years going forward.
Any other questions for Todd?
Hey guys, I just, I guess I'm just looking for clarity. Todd, thank you for that presentation. So where we, our responsibility is to approve this so that the collaborative can move forward with the fund. Is that, is that where we're at?
100%.
Perfect.
It's already, it was approved unanimously by the board in June.
And so tonight, we would be voting to approve a motion. I can read it out loud from the information document that you shared with us, Todd, you and your staff, to approve the creation of the Collaborative for Educational Services Capital Reserve Account with a balance limit of $5 million for the purpose of accumulating funds for the acquisition, maintenance and improvement of capital items. That is the motion. Do I hear a support for that motion?
So moved.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was that an aye?
Yep.
All right. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Todd. It was great to hear from you and, and to meet you for the first time. Your predecessor came and presented a little bit about CES in general. And while this presentation was not dedicated to that, I welcome you back to do that sometime in the future.
And I will take an opportunity to share with Annie. We put together a promotional brochure because sometimes it's hard to kind of grasp. The organization is really big and offers a lot, it has a lot of diverse offerings. I myself was kind of surprised when I came, came in. I thought I knew what CES did and then it turns out I only, it was like, I can only see the elephant's trunk. And so I'm going to share it with you. It's a very nice brochure that articulates, you know, kind of the benefits for a member districts belonging to the collaborative. But I appreciate the committee's time today and I really appreciate your support. This is an exciting time for CES as we look to position ourselves going forward. So thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, we are going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is presentations of school and program strategy documents with goals. And it's the entire leadership team who will present. We're going to start with Hopkins Academy. April Camuso.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate everyone coming out tonight to hear our updates. I am going to highlight just a couple of items that are new to the document. If otherwise, the same strategy document as last year. But of course, if you have any questions about anything that's not new as well, feel free to ask about anything that's on here. So there are three items that I wanted to go over. The first one is from the first column under standard A instructional leadership. And that one has to do with something that we actually started last year, but failed to include in this document. And it's really important to our goals around inclusivity and equity. And it's work that we are continuing, so I wanted to highlight it. And that is developing a more inclusive program for our special education students in middle school. So this includes using co-teaching in our math and English classes for our students that would have previously been in pull-out classes. And that has been going very, very well. I'm very happy with it. And Ms. Mulligata, who was our new special education teacher last year, has done a great job working with all of the teachers around this. So we're excited to continue that work and we are working on getting feedback and professional development for teachers in order to have effective co-teaching models in the school. It was already, we don't have co-teaching in the high school, but we didn't have the separate classes in the high school. So it's a bigger change for our middle school setup. The other one I wanted to address is from the second column. So the second standard there, management and operations, that really could kind of be in a couple of different places. And this is the idea of using social network analysis in order to try and identify that every student and staff member really each has somebody in the district that they trust in some way and can go to for a variety of things. So that's something that we'll be working on this year and finding out the information through surveys and then mapping that using social network analysis in order to identify if there are any students or staff who do not have enough connections and connections of various kinds. And the third item I want to look at is in the fourth column, which is under the professional culture standard. And that is a big change this year. It's also a management and operations change because it affects our schedule and our busing. But really, the heart of it has to do with the staff collaboration. Our staff have now had two of their, for us, delayed start days where they get to collaborate with one another. Staff members all selected other staff members to work with on a variety of different topics. So one group, for example, is working to differentiate. I have a combination of a Jenna teacher, an ESP, I think there's actually two ESPs in that group, and a special education teacher who are working together to differentiate the curriculum for some students in that classroom. So that is another piece that we're continuing this year and I'm hoping everyone's going to love and we're going to be able to continue to add moving forward. Because as you know, staff collaboration is something that's really near and dear to my heart and research shows has a very large positive impact on student achievement. So those are the three ones that I wanted to highlight. But of course, any questions, comments, concerns, I'm happy to, to hear feedback on anything or answer questions.
Those are three great ones, April. Some of these items like co-teaching and professional learning groups are things that are, you know, professional learning groups are things that are, you know, some cutting-edge universities are doing in, in my community and network. So it's really nice to see this happen at our very own high school. Thank you. I, I look forward to digging into, to some of the action plans as well that you linked in here. Thank you for doing that. Opening it up to feedback from the others. The other school committee members and Jen, Jen has her hand raised, so I'm going to call on Principal Dowd.
I think she can't make herself visible when she needs to or heard. There she is.
Hi Jen, did you have a question?
No, I didn't. I was just really fearful that I was going to be locked out of the meeting.
So yeah, we made you co-host. You're good. You're here. You're on deck next. Thank you so much.
Great job, Principal Camuso.
She's just too excited. She wants to get in there.
To my other school committee colleagues, Ethan, Paul, Christine, any comments on the Hopkins Academy presentation?
Oh, looks good to me. Thanks, April.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, April. We're going to move next to Hadley Elementary School with Principal Dowd. Take it away, Ms. Dowd.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thanks for letting me into the meeting. I appreciate it. First, I just want to say thank you so much for letting me present tonight on my strategic document. Each year has felt a little different and I have to report that this year feels like the opening of school has run very smoothly. And so I'm just happy to report that I am here and the building, we had a great opening of school. And so I'm happy to report. And just give some highlights of the document that you all received. The first just being in Section A Instructional Leadership. Last year, we finally selected our new ELA program. And we were fortunate enough to purchase the entire curriculum, which is our Wonders curriculum. And so this year, staff will be working together and using collaboration time to implement that program in kindergarten to grade six. The teachers have already started their work in the first couple of professional development days. So that will be ongoing. We also started this last year, just to highlight. We strengthened our teacher input through the HES leadership team. This was a team that naturally developed during COVID to answer questions. It was just so much information for just a building principal to manage. And so we had some stakeholders come together to build and strengthen our problem-solving skills and our communication. And so that's a, a small team, a leadership team that has continued. And I'm really excited that we're continuing that work. At Hopkins, they have department chairs and other natural groups of, of folks to problem solve. But in HES, we really did it. And so I'm excited that we've strengthened the communication and allowing teachers to give feedback and bring problems to the HES leadership team so we can collaborate together. The second, and the second item is management and operations. This is continued work around creating an effective learning environment. Additions to this plan include increased staff collaboration time, which Principal Camuso spoke about. Increasing and allowing staff to meet and discuss how to best support students. Also, the addition of added collaboration goals with Principal Camuso around our transition, our transitions. And for our students who are going to be transitioning, so think of our sixth graders going into seventh grade. So really, how can we make sure that we're including students and thinking about their next steps? And it sounds like there's a lot of great things happening at Hopkins to get excited about. The third is family and community engagement. This highlights, include, the highlights include continuing to invite our HES families in and provide enriching events in which we can be together as a community. We've already experienced some this school year in our traditional open house event. And this week, we have our parent conferences, which it seems almost every single parent has signed up for. So we will be doing that this week, inviting families in to talk about their children. And so that's exciting. Other events besides our open house, our PTO events. World Fair is going to be back this year, so we're excited about that. We're going to be planning that. Literacy events, field trips. I've already gotten so many requests for field trips, so we're going to be doing events like that. We will be doing a springtime ice cream social event, which I think will be wonderful to bring in prospective families and also just enjoy a warmer, warmer weather and the summer coming. So we'll be planning that throughout the school year. Some opportunities that we have also included this year is a continuation of our Spanish lab. PTO is purchasing free shirts for all students, which is wonderful. So every child will be included in our spirit wear. We also started chorus during school hours. So this is new. So whether or not you have transportation or somebody to pick you up and drop you off, you can still participate in chorus. And I think that's just wonderful with opening up equal access to all students who are eligible for that. We also am starting a diversity club this year, so I'm excited about that. Permission slips will be going out soon. And we also are doing, we just started a homework club. We started about two weeks ago. So this is before school care for, for students in grades two through six. Families can drop their students off. They're supervised with, I have two adults right now helping students do their homework. So if parents are having a hard time doing homework with their kids, they can drop them off before school and somebody else will have to deal with them. So it's worked out pretty nicely so far. Another nice thing that I've seen is some families that have to drop off, our school choice families, who have to drop off students at Hopkins and then wait around for an hour to then drop at the elementary school. It's just provided a nice opportunity for families to be able to get to work a little bit earlier and know that their children are safe and cared for. And finally, our professional culture. I continue to maintain our commitment to a professional and kind school culture. I've added specific examples of some things that I've done over the past couple of years, which is maintaining an open door policy. Schedule regular staff meetings. Also with new staff, this has been very helpful this year. We have some friendly, wonderful new teachers that are excited to start at Hadley Elementary School. And so just meeting with them on a weekly basis to problem solve, answer any questions and make them feel comfortable has just been lovely. So I will continue to do that. I am going to again, build our HES leadership team, which is small now, but we will be branching out, inviting other stakeholders to the meetings. And supporting staff and allowing for more collaboration time. So those are just some highlights of some things that we've been working on. I'm open for any questions, comments, feedback.
This is terrific. Jen, thank you so much. I'm especially excited to hear that you're going to continue Spanish at the elementary school for a second year. I know that was very well received and I'd love to see that program grow. I'm also really pleased to hear about the diversity club and so can't, can't wait to find out more about that. I'm going to open it up to comments from my colleagues.
Hey Jen.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Chris. Go ahead.
Oh, I just, when you were talking about the before-school homework help, is that, is that every day?
It's every day, Monday through Friday. We have students, homework usually starts really easy in second grade with some reading and, and some light work. But we open up grades two through six and Monday through Friday. So somebody is always there at the start of school. Kids come in, they meet in the cafeteria. There's two staff members there who are working with students to help support them academically. It's open to anybody who needs it. And so we just started that about two weeks ago. And I'm, I'm just so excited to be able to provide that for families.
That's great. I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was going to ask about that too. So begs the question, is that sort of, not just from a homework perspective, but the pre, how should I say, before-school care? Drop-off care, is that an unmet need? But I actually hadn't even thought about it before.
Well, I, it's a great question. And I think this lends nicely to at least seeing how many kids are going to be accessing it. It's at no cost to families. So if families need to get their children there, if I was a betting person, I would, I would say that there's absolutely a need probably in kindergarten and grade one with the youngest students. Just looking at how many students access the after-school program. But this is a nice first step into exploring the possibilities for before-school care.
How, how do you plan on managing the numbers in terms of staff to student? Is there a limit that can access this? Or I, I'm just wondering if you, if you all of a sudden become overwhelmed with students and then it becomes, you know, where students aren't really focusing on homework so much as this is just priest, like before-school care?
Yeah, it was one of the, one of the things that kept me up in the middle of the night, to be honest, before it started. I had a terrible nightmare that every single student, you know, kid of grade two to grade six showed up on the first day of homework club. And I only had, yeah, and I only had two teachers. Right now, it's, it's pretty steady. So it's about between five and 10 kids. Again, it just started, so we're, we're really going to monitor to see how many kids are accessing it. And then, you know, Dr. McKenzie's been really great about taking any feedback or, you know, being there to support us if we, if we might need additional staff. But right now, we're, we're in pretty good shape. If more students decided to access it, to me, that's wonderful. And if we can plan things around COVID-19, we can plan homework club. So we would, we would do breakout spaces. We would access the library. We'd find alternative classrooms. Right now, it doesn't seem like that's a need, but it could change at any moment. So we just need to communicate and, and, and plan if things shift.
No, I think it's great.
Ethan, any comments or questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Principal Dowd. Appreciate it. This is a terrific plan for what promises to be a great year.
Thank you. Thank you again. Great questions.
All right, moving on to the next item of our agenda, we have Student Services Program Goals and Priorities. And Annie, who is?
Celia Snow? It doesn't look like, and I cannot see.
I, yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Welcome, Celia.
Okay, there it is. Hold on one sec. Can anybody, everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, um, thank you for letting me come and present. It's been quite a while since I've had the opportunity to speak at a school committee meeting. So it's my pleasure to be here. So as I, in past, my focus as the Student Services Department is to really look at how I can support and collaborate what's going on in the general ed curriculum and make sure that students with disabilities are also included. Since past year, I've been really focusing on what is the specialized instruction. But also more importantly, how does it align with or supplement what's going on in the general ed classrooms? So in looking at sort of the develop and continuously revise curriculum to ensure rigor, relevance and alignment to state standards, something that we did this year is we purchased the entire curriculum, the new reading curriculum. We purchased the intervention curriculum to go alongside the Wonders curriculum that they're doing at the elementary school. So that's the Wonder Works Intervention. And we purchased that for each of the special education teachers, which I'm not sure if that's been done before, but that was a big endeavor. And so likewise with the collaboration time, now the special ed teachers will be able to collaborate with the general ed teachers and you know, they're, they have the same curriculum, just the intervention materials. So I think that's a really great step in aligning what's happening in special ed and what's happening in the general ed curriculum. I'm hoping that, you know, in the future, we'll be able to do that with the math curriculum as well. But I don't think that HES is quite set on its math curriculum. So we're not doing that quite yet. And then another thing, and if we're looking at the secondary and aligning the curriculum, we have the new co-teaching model. So that's where we're really focusing on the inclusion model. Last year, I offered a full-day professional development to Ms. Koki and some of her other co-teachers with Lisa Decker. And then now we are looking at doing a, like a three-year phased academy, MTSS Academy, that will focus on universal design that Ms. Koki is going to be participating in as well. So those are some things that we're putting in place to help expand that co-teaching model in terms of our more specialized programs. So co-teaching's in its second year and then our life skills program is also in its second year. And we have expanded that this year to include middle school students. So last year was only high school. And this year, we've now expanded it to middle school. I purchased two curriculums. So it started with N2Y, which is a, it gives curriculum that aligns to state standards. And we had ELA, math, science, and social studies. We recently added a new curriculum called Teach Down, which also aligns to the state standards. It's a little more comprehensive. I felt it aligned better. And then it also includes the life skills curriculum as part of it. So that's really important. So that way, you know, the students either having their curriculum when they're in the life skills program, or they're able to be in the general classrooms for the core content and have a curriculum that's aligned that can also be integrated into the new maps that April has been working on, getting everybody working on for the different curriculums. In terms of, well, the implementation of the MTSS, I will be participating in the consultation with Dr. Markot so that we can have better alignment again between all the tiers of instruction, including special ed, which special ed in the past has not participated in those consultative sessions. So that's going to be a new thing as well. Also, with the professional culture that Ms. Dowd mentioned, I've been participating in the HES leadership team meetings as well. So those are all things that are going on to help the special ed department and Student Services Department align better with what's going on in the general ed classrooms and what's going on in each building as well.
Thank you, Snow. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Questions for Ms. Snow on the Student Services Department?
Okay. And I would just like to say, I'm thankful that the police didn't rush in on my presentation because I am still at the elementary school building. So I will be exiting the building shortly.
Okay, very well.
Thanks, Celia.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Okay, moving on to the next item of the agenda. We are discussing the SEL MTSS Coach Goals and Priorities for 2022 and 2023. And for that, we'll hear from Michelle Utoz.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me again this month. I know I just presented last month and the doc kind of captures a lot of that. So I don't want to be too, too repetitive for you. I do want to highlight a couple of things. Overall, the doc better captures, it includes the language of the multi-tiered systems of support. You'll see that reflected in both the vision statement and in the Standards 1 and 2 language there. A couple of highlights or expansions on last month's is that the professional development that I'll facilitate this year. Last year, it was focused on HES. This year, it's more heavily focused at Hopkins Academy. Last month, I talked a bit about how we developed and researched and looked for data systems to use and our screenings. As you heard last month, we rolled those out. We completed all of our fall screenings in both literacy, math, and mental health for all of our K through 12 students. And as mentioned, last month, revamping our previously what was known as our child study process to tiered support team process. Those meetings have begun now that we've had six weeks under our belts. Things are going smoothly. And the other piece that I wanted to highlight is since the start of school, we have found out we've received two additional grants, both which will support all of, all of this work. So not only SEL, but our systems of support in social emotional learning as well as literacy and math. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the document.
Congratulations on securing the additional funding. Sounds like your, your position is really breaking even. And that's really positive news. Thank you. Paul, Ethan, Christine, questions for Michelle?
No, I just wonder, Annie, I mean, all we see are the awards that grants you all are successful for. So I just assume you're betting 1,000. You and your team on this, so.
No, I can speak.
You don't need to disprove me of that.
No, when I talk about the district one that you have to vote on, I can tell you the ones we're still voting on. We're pretty close, but all the ones where they're way
We're pretty close, but all the ones where they're waiting, we're pretty close.
That's great.
Yeah, and that's all, Annie. I can't take credit for that. I'm, I'm just doing some of the work beyond it once we get it.
Michelle, can you just remind me, how long have you been in this term? Is it two years now? Is it more than two years?
This is the second year, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You completed one full year.
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
When does this term, it this, it they run congruent with the school year?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Terrific. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, and the one that you have to vote on, which is the district and the overarching goals, because we put together a five-year plan and the school committee participated in that, so the overarching goals don't really change. It's just every year I call out the activities that we're focused on for that particular year. And a lot of these, so a big one is securing funding to expand and enhance commitments we've made and investments we've already made. Today, we've submitted uh, about a quarter of a million dollars in grants as of October 30th, we, October 30th, as of September 30th. We'd submitted about a quarter of a million dollars in uh, competitive grant funds. That doesn't include our entitlement grants. And we have been successful in receiving the Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health Continuation Grant. We did get the Very Competitive Safety Supportive Schools Action Planning Grant and Integrating Social Emotional and Academic Learning Grant. We were accepted into the Inclusive Instruction through Universal Design for Learning Academy, and Ms. Koki will be the lead teacher involved in that efforts. We're very excited about that. We also received a competitive lead for literacy. This, this grant will support the work that uh, Jen talked about, Ms. Dowd talked about in terms of the integration of the wonders curriculum and making sure that our literacy tiered systems of support are well documented and aligned with evidence-based practices. We also received a very competitive grant from the executive uh, branch of Massachusetts Government. They're called STEM-focused internships. I've had this in my newsletter now for the past couple of weeks. We have a total of $45,000 available. And um, there is enough money in that grant to pay for 25 paid internships. I'm extremely grateful to departments in town. Hadley Media has written up and identified two student internships. I highlighted those in the form I sent out to students. Really exciting opportunities. Uh, Hadley Fire is also has internships. The Conservation Committee has sent us an internship. Um, so this is exciting, and I do appreciate all of the people, uh, Keegan and Curran across the street has taken on it, student intern. I appreciate the businesses, the town departments who are supporting this experiential and out-of-school time learning, which is so valuable to our students, and our students really enjoy it. I'd like to put a plug out here, and I'll be sending out a letter to parents. If you have any connections in industries where we may uh, be able to place students, particularly in science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and healthcare, uh, please reach out directly to me, even if you just want to suggest to me, you might want to contact this person. Uh, if, if a member of the community would like to facilitate an introduction, I'm very open to that, or if you just want to give me an idea and say, well, Annie, I, I'm not comfortable with you saying that I sent you there, but you may want to look over here. Whatever people want to suggest, I'm open to it because our students are really enjoying this. Um, we are, we also received an additional early college support grant. We're waiting to hear on a couple other uh, innovation pathways, support grants, and there's a request for proposal that is out today. Uh, I have to look for it. It is out today, so I'll look for it tomorrow. For a, an opportunity where students would have both, it's kind of blending early college, high schools. So you can earn tuition-free college credit and the elements of innovation pathways, so experiential career immersion experiences and internships in the tech sector. So we'll be applying for that, so we can have a tech pathway for students. Um, so a lot of the work to date this year and will continue to be work that supports making sure that we create the conditions for deep learning. So that means learning that is relational, where students or adults are establishing positive relationships with one another, student-to-student positive relationships, learning that is experiential, that extends beyond the school day, that is relevant, and that is personalized, matched to the interests and uh, and interests of students. We also are investing in a lot of these grants in those tiered systems of support. So the big overarching goal in our district is that we meet every student, staff, and family member exactly where they're at, and we honor everything that they bring, and we walk with them through their challenges, and we allocate resources in a way to support them through challenges. We encounter them, we see you wherever you are, we honor and respect where you are, and we invest in getting you to where you want to go next. So we encounter, affirm, and encourage your development. And the activities this year are really focused on that. Uh, we look forward to in February having a the preliminary view of an equity dashboard. We want to make sure as we undertake these uh, steps to meet everyone where they're at, that we're doing that with a focus on equity, make sure that nobody is left behind. Um, and uh, always focused on having mutually supportive and mutually supportive relationships with the community and with our families. We appreciate the support they give us, and we are always looking for ways in which we can support them. Some of these grants also help us to do that. So the activities, the priorities for this year are listed. I probably am overly ambitious, but um, I do that every year, and you folks are forgiving. I, I shoot, I shoot to the moon, and then I land in Lake Chicago, but my heart's in it the whole way, so. That's for this year, and you would need to approve because these are the, these are the activities and goals that you'll evaluate me on throughout the course of the year.
Thank you, Annie. Um, I, I would definitely say issue for the moon and land of stars, definitely. Uh, this is a uh, an incredible track record of identifying grants that are consistent with our priorities and uh, securing them. Um, I'm especially uh, excited to hear about the internships. I think they do um, help us achieve our goals around deeper learning. Um, and uh, I have uh, some contacts, ma- they may be dated, but in the 2000s I ran a technology association in our region, so I might be able to help connect. Uh, so definitely call on me if you um, are, are interested in that. Um, I have no other questions about this. It's consistent, and and definitely you can see where some of the other presentations we've hea- heard before flow into this really nicely. So thank you for um, creating um, that alignment. Um, colleagues, uh, any comments on this or questions for Annie?
My only question, Annie, on the internships, do they have to be local?
No, so the challenges, we do want to keep in mind equity and support and other things. They don't have to be. However, if they're not, and these are out-of-school time, and um, some, some can be done during the school day, but also because of the high school schedule that we're working on, uh, a lot of this happens out of school. They don't have to be local. Um, but we also, we want to blend because not all students, because then transportation can become a bit of a challenge. But I would ask people if they have an idea, that they have a thought, um, if it's virtual, if it's not local, if it's any idea, please reach out to me, and I will be sending out a letter to parents and um, to the larger community uh, to please reach out, because the students really love it, and it's something that we're committed to, and one of the ways we really want to distinguish Hopkins Academy, I mean, there are many ways to distinguish it, but this investment in early college high school, innovation pathways, and meaningful out-of-school time learning, where students can really check out careers and pursue their interests, is we just want to double down on that effort. So any ideas, please, people, email me. Just for now, until I get another grant, I'll be trying to coordinate and organize this, but I'm working on a grant to get someone to do that.
This was uh, after his high school year, but my eldest did a, a remote internship for uh, involving technology and research and developing a, a database uh, for a uh, hi- his customers in California. So it, it sounds to me like that could be even
Absolutely.
Much better equitable uh, way to access really college models. Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you. And so this requires a vote, and so do I hear a motion to approve uh, the Hadley Public School Strategy Document 2019, 2024?
So make a motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Annie. We are moving next to uh, the results of the 2022 MCAS Accountability Presentation.
Yes, so pretty brief, just a couple of slides that are linked into the agenda. It's easier than trying to share screens, anyone in the public, and just click on it right in the agenda. You can see it. Um, so we did what the, the first bit of data that I provided for you are the percent of students in each grade level in English Language Arts who are meeting or exceeding expectations. These would be the most recent results of the spring of 2022. You see their results for Hadley Public Schools for 2019 compared to the state, and in 2021, we did not administer MCAS in 2020. We closed down in the spring. So 2021, and again in 2022. And any areas that shaded green, Hadley Public Schools um, performed as well as or exceeded the state. And you can see in 2022, where across the state, um, there were some, s- some performance dips across the state, we still performed as well as, or in some cases quite a bit better. When you're looking at English Language Arts, um, grade seven did quite a bit better than the state, grade six did quite a bit better than the state, and grade 10 did quite a bit, bit better than the state. Um, again, in the next uh, bit of data is for mathematics. Also, you can see in 2022 that um, there were several grades where Hadley Public Schools outperformed the state, in some cases by a long shot. I really want to, and I'm anticipating there'll be an article in the Gazette. They did come and take a picture and talk with Ms. Parker and Mr. Ciaglo. You'll notice in grade five in 2022, 70% of fifth graders are meeting or exceeding expectations in mathematics as opposed to 36% statewide. In sixth grade, 72% of the students are, were meeting or exceeding in the spring as, as opposed to 42% statewide. Um, and grade 10 also outperformed the state, where in the state, 50% are meeting or exceeding, and 64% in grade 10 in Hadley Public Schools. In science, uh, our science teachers, so uh, Ms. Parker, our middle school science team, Ms. Duncan, um, our high school science team, they really hit the ball out of the park. You can see that uh, 60% of our fifth graders meeting or exceeding in science, 54% of our eighth graders, this again is higher than uh, the state, and 72% um, in grade 10 as opposed to 47% in the state. And last year was a tough year, as was the year before. So these um, these are impressive. On the student growth percentile, um, all of our teachers, I really want to underscore this, and our students are, are hardworking superstars, but I do have to call out again, grade five and six, because not only did they have incredibly high achievement, they also had incredibly high growth, right? So they're high-growth, high-achievement in mathematics in grades five and six. Uh, in grade seven, we see high growth uh, in ELA, and in grade 10 in English Language Arts. Um, and uh, in terms of one thing that made me very uh, happy, when we compare our median composite scores. Um, now we do see a slight dip from 2019 pre-pandemic to 2022. Um, this English Language Arts grade three through eight, when you look at all students, you see, you see a slight dip. But, and again, 2019 pre-pandemic, 2022, those were long and challenging period when we were in school, but in each category, English Language Arts three through eight, Mathematics three through eight, Science three through eight, um, in each of those categories, students that, that qualify in the high needs category, that group im- improved from 19 to 22. That made my heart sing. So that, that's fantastic. Um, and then finally, our accountability percentiles, so this is a percentile number where schools with light configurations, you're putting your percentile ranking, we see that we saw improvement from 21 to 22 at HES and significant improvement at Hopkins Academy going from 66 percentile in 2021 to the 83rd percentile in 2022. Um, so that is our update on MCAS, and um, I look forward to, and, and also for us even more important than MCAS, is that regular screening that we do, so teachers already in the fall, and the good news is that some of the students that look like they struggled on MCAS in the spring, their fall screening data shows them on track to do well, to meet grade-level benchmarks, or in the case of our MAP testing, it actually predicts how they'll perform on the MCAS in the spring. So our fall screening scores in many cases were, gave us better news than uh, than our spring MCAS data, which is not surprising, because MCAS is stressful, it's unique, it's a one-off. The screening data is really a much more useful tool for us. We use MCAS to ask questions about the extent to which our curriculum is aligned. We don't use it to evaluate educator practice because it's a single moment in time or we're a couple of days, whereas our screening data um, helps us get a much better understanding of where kids are at and what they need, and we do that three times a year. And that's it for MCAS. Until next spring.
Thank you, Annie. I was very heartened to see uh, the uh, results. Um, I had a a Hopkins Academy uh, teenager who came home very happy to show me some scores, and uh, I have to say, you know, we're, we're a district that prides ourselves on not teaching to the test. And we um, this experience, you see great results um, by diversifying our, the ways in which we teach. Um, and um, very, very proud of all the teachers and students uh, with these results. Um, comments from Paul, Ethan, Christine?
So the 2019, that's this year's seniors, correct?
Oh, my gosh, you got it there. Thank you. Uh, 2019, this year's seniors? Yes, because they've taken MCAS that 10th grade, correct? So they'd currently be seniors. We did that right? I'm gonna blame you if we didn't. We did that right, yes. Yeah, no, 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 no. Uh, 19th spring, 2021, so it wouldn't be this year's seniors.
Okay.
11, 12, yeah, they graduated last year. Correct? 2019, spring of 2019, they would have graduated.
Annie, two questions. One is um, what's accountability for?
What's the accountability percentile?
Yeah.
So it's when the state looks at, again, true percentile ranking, which you could do a better, if people were interested in a um, explanation of percentile rankings, but they take your configuration. So we, Hopkins is compared to 712 light configurations, and what they analyze there are scaled scores, growth, all the aspects of MCAS. So how your students performed compared to how, and these are aggregate and composite scores. So they, they look at uh, aggregate student uh, growth percentile, they look at uh, median composite score, um, percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations, and then they kind of rank you against similarly configured schools. So Hadley Elementary is compared with all K-6 schools throughout the state, Hopkins Academy is compared to all 712 schools. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's it. Okay, thanks. And then that second to last slide showing the changes and rankings over the 2019 to 22. So now, given the, what's been in the news lately about significant decline in student scores due to COVID, I take this to mean that our students are essentially haven't shown that same decline or even have shown an increase. Am I?
In some cases, where you would look, and again, what's tricky about MCAS, right, is that you're comparing unlike cohorts. So that's why we say we focus on curriculum. But if you, if you look at, for example, the English Language Arts, uh, that first slide after the title slide, you see in 2021, you, you, you're comparing our columns, is what we want to do. So, so we have seen some variance, and even when we're outperforming the state, we did see, you know, we're not performing as well as we did in 2021. Now also, in that, that I have to tell you was a little bit surprising for me, because I thought, goodness gracious, 2021 was the year that we came back, we were in person. Um, but I thought, gosh, that seemed more complicated. However, when I reflect on last year, there was a tremendous amount of absenteeism for good reason. What I have not done is analyzed the correlation between absenteeism and performance, and legitimate reasons for absenteeism, but um, there was, and we all But there was, and we also had periods of, you know, outbreaks of a lot of illness. So I think, so overall, compared to the state, I'm pleased, but you can also compare our year to year and say, oh, yeah, there's certainly a COVID effect there, no doubt. We just, perhaps we can say, we didn't feel your point. We didn't experience the same, perhaps as severe of an effect as some other districts.
Any other questions for Annie? Okay. Right, terrific. Annie, thank you. And this does not, this is just a presentation, doesn't require a vote. We're going to move on to second reading of district wellness policy. Annie?
Yes, so this you saw last time, first reading, Ethan and Christine had spoken about it. And Ms. Dab presented at Policy Subcommittee, so you had a chance to review it last time. And now, as the as a regular school committee does, you get one first reading and you vote on it at your second reading.
Terrific. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments about the wellness program and policy as proposed? I thought it was a very well-written and comprehensive document that spanned multiple areas of a student's life. And I'm just really happy to see it coming together.
And I would like to point out, you'll want to thank your district wellness coordinator, Jennifer Downs, for that because I no longer am in charge, which is a good thing. I had a Kit Kat and a V8 for lunch today. So I'm no longer in charge of the Wellness Committee, and this is all Ms. Dab.
Thanks, Jen.
Yes, thank you. I I was on this committee a long time ago. And and I'm just really glad to see this great group that you're working with. And it's it looks like a pretty excellent plan. So do I hear a motion to approve this wellness policy?
So moved?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we're going to move to the superintendent report on records review for Hartsbrook.
Yes, so upon a closer reading of your policy, I've had you voting annually for to allow Hartsbrook to operate. And Paul, you understandably asked a question every year. I don't understand why we're good on this. You do have to, according to your policy, if a private school starts in the community, if they want to start a private school, you would have to vote on that. But the policy is that I have to review all the records every single year. That's in our L policies. So I go through the checklist to make sure they have a certificate of occupancy. I review their financials. I have to do this every year. They send me all the paperwork. I go through, I go through the checklist that's in our policy. And in the school committee policies, and I'm here to report to you this evening, that they've met all of the criteria for continued operation. So Hartsbrook will continue to operate in the district. There'd be no reason for them not to. They've met all the criteria. But it does not require your vote.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
So just on that, Annie, so in the future, that's it, only when one?
Only when one wants to start, correct. So the policy, if somebody wants to start a private school, the school committee has to approve it initially. And then the policy, every year, I have to, the superintendent has to evaluate all of their documents to make sure they've met the criteria, and the checklist is included in the policies in Section L of our policies, Community Relations Act.
So do you sign something and affirm something to the state?
I affirm something to Hartsbrook. And they then, I think, have to keep it with their documents. I don't, the state doesn't ask it.
They don't ask anything from me, no. How much time does this take from you? I'm just curious.
Not much time at all because Hartsbrook is excellent at putting together their records. I give them a copy of the criteria and the checklist. They know exactly what to give me. They have it all in order. Then I just go through and check it. And we make site visits over there because we also part of federal grants having to do with IDEA. Celia and I, and more so Celia, are routinely over there having site visits because we will have meetings over there.
Thanks.
Sure.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item I, parent donation of lawn signs. Annie?
Yes, very simply, we have some parents who wish to remain anonymous. They would like to donate lawn signs. I've seen images of them. They say things like "school zone" and "slow down." I believe they'll also potentially be going to the select board to see if they might be able to put them in front of some of the municipal buildings along Route 9. I'm also going to ask the parents if they would be comfortable with putting some in front of Hadley Elementary School, Route 47. People can travel at a pretty good clip and not realize that when they're headed over to UMass. Because this is a donation, one I'd like to acknowledge the parents. It's very kind of them to donate something to the school department and potentially the town to try to bring awareness to student safety and school safety. But any donation needs to be accepted by the school committee.
Hey, quick question. Why are they not school zones?
So there are school zones. They just want to also just draw attention to. So we have a flashing light right before Hadley Elementary School. So we do have, yeah, and this is, these are just additional designs to, that would go like in front of Russell School. They may be asking alongside Town Hall where there's grass, like I said, maybe along, I mean, any place where there's a one of our buildings, a public building along Route 9.
Any other questions before we vote on this?
I think it's great because I honestly, I just don't feel like it is very well-marked. People just seem to fly up and down Route 9. You know, obviously, there's the stop sign, the stop light, and I think people are always trying to get to the stoplight before it turns yellow. And yeah, I don't think it's it's this clearly marked because I thought it used to. I don't know why I, I'm paying attention now, I guess, a little bit more than I have in the past, obviously, because it's, you know, something that has been brought to my attention to really look at it. But yeah, I I I think it's great that people want to to donate them.
Great. Yes, many thanks to the parents who are organizing the lawn signs. I think it'll be a great asset. Yeah, Joyce has a comment. Joyce, you can unmute yourself if you, I welcome you to say something.
Yes, I just want to just chime in on this one factor that we have been in conversation with the state on very numerous occasions about marking off where the school zone is on Route 9. So it's not something that we have slid by or not addressed. And and I just want to say that we will continue to, while they're doing their construction, to still be on top of them to see what we can do about making it more of an awareness. And I also want to thank the parents, and I would also, when they bring it before the Select Board, to support this for them.
Excellent. Thank you, Joyce. Okay. So let's put forth a motion. We have not. I'm I'm interested in a motion. Would anyone like to propose one?
Sure. I guess I support a motion to accept the signs.
Thank you, Paul. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Passes unanimous. Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving on to business manager reports. Chris, are you there?
I am here, there. Okay, so you have two reports in your packages tonight. The first is the regular expense report that I send to everyone every month. Not much really, you know, it's early in the school year, there's not a lot to report. I did want to point out a couple of items that might have gotten your attention. The first one is on page six of eight pages, is the tuition to non-public schools. That's a sped tuition line, and it shows that we're $171,000 over budget. In reality, we did the transfers of those purchase orders after this report was run, moving one of the purchase orders to Circuit Breaker and the other to the 240 grant. So we're actually under budget as we speak today. When I ran the report, it was still showing in the original account. So that's nothing to worry about there. And I believe there was another line too that had a similar little adventure to it. No, actually, that was the only one. My apologies. So, you know, looking in good shape, obviously, nothing to worry about. We are getting the grants coming in now. The grants are a little behind this year. I think they've been a little slower the past few years just because of the sheer number of grants that have come out. I know the Grant Department at DESI is just going straight out. Every time I speak with them, they're just kind of saying how how just straight out busy they are. And so they're not getting approved quite as quickly as normal. But by next month, we should have all of the usual grants and some of the new ones that Anne had discussed earlier on a report for you. As as of right now, we don't really have anything to report for the grants. But once we do, those expenses will be moving over. We'll have other expenses that will move over to the grants as well. It'll free up even more money in the regular budget. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about the the general budget report that I give?
No questions for me? No, I don't think so.
Okay. And then the other report we have is the revolving task report. Everything looks in good shape with these. We had some expenses at the athletic revolving for hockey ice time that was actually quite expensive and brought the balance down considerably from where we were in August. Lunch account hasn't had a deposit yet. So you can see basically since June, it's come down about $30,000. But we've yet to have deposits posted to that account on the town side. So once we do that, the balance will come back up again. Preschool revolving is actually a little bit higher right now than it was at the beginning of the year, which is certainly nice to see. Student activity is going to take a big decrease. There's a Washington DC trip coming up. And there's a big check going out, so you'll see that balance drop considerably. If not, I I think it should drop by the by the October 31 report. Hadley Kids, again, going up a little bit from the beginning of the year, and School Choice, we haven't had any expenses charged to that yet. So you can see it's got a high balance right now, but that will come down both with the budgeted expenses that we've had and also just from the facilities report that Colliers did over the summer or late last year. And we're doing some of the improvements with School Choice funds for that as well. So that balance will obviously come down over the course of the year. Any questions on the revolting?
So the ice time, I know we co-op hockey with Amherst, right? Do we do we compensate some of the ice time fees?
Yeah, it's actually almost $5,000. It's it's pretty expensive. If I remember correctly, I'm just going off memory, I think it was about $800 a kid. So it was it was quite a bit.
Okay, it's expensive, but I know our kids have truly valued playing it over there, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions for Chris? Great, thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're going to move to school committee reports and discussions. I'll start with finance. There has not been a tri board meeting on finance, so I have nothing to report on that yet. I will say for CES, Tara could not be here. She sends regrets, and she will give her report out next month. Policy, Ethan?
Good evening. We met earlier today, Christine and I, along with Annie and Sergeant Romero, and had the first conversation around the proposed MOU with the police. And and we, I believe Annie will have that conversation on next month's agenda for the first reading.
Okay, very good. And next we have fields.
Yeah, thanks, Hamara. I will say it's it's quite an exciting time, actually. So on the 27th of this week, so on Thursday, there'll be the Fall Town Meeting, and on that, there's a warrant for that recommendation from the CPA, Community Preservation Preservation Act Group to award Hopkins $1.5 million for the second phase of the athletic fields. So this is over a decade and coming, right? And so years ago, we went through these efforts to raise funds. I had a lot of amazing donors from the town, from the CPA funds, from the Hopkins trustees, from multiple businesses and individuals around the town to do the first phase of what we always knew as a multi-phase project. So we went out there and engaged the landowners, the public about the design. And we, a year or so ago, we finished that project, right? And so now we have a brand new softball field, a brand new baseball field, multi-use field, all on land that had been facilitated and purchased by the trustees and provided to the school years and years ago. So it was really the culmination of a long dream. So now we find ourselves ready to do that second phase. And so what we have proposed to do was redo the varsity boys' baseball field, which is in dire need of renovation, to do some more field work and create another multi-use field, and then redo a girls' softball field. And then, in addition, complete something we had started last time, which was a paved path around the field that I know gets a lot of community use. That is going to now be fully completed into a full loop. So really looking forward to seeing that come to town meeting on Thursday. I want to say thank you to CPA for their vast support of this. It's a large project, make no mistake. It's it's expensive, as most things are these days. There's a lot of grading, a lot of irrigation, expenses, supplies have gone up in cost. And so we really appreciate CPA's support. I guess I would just say, let's look at this as not just the culmination of all those folks' hard work, but really just an investment in the school, right? I think, as we heard earlier, we pride ourselves in having excellent academics. I think also we pride ourselves in having excellent athletics, right? We are a school that those small really excel, and we excel in a lot of different ways. So we, this field just helps continue that tradition of excellence in athletics for Hopkins. But frankly, this is a big expenditure that'll last decades and benefit multiple generations. So I encourage everybody to get out, come out on Thursday to that town meeting.
Thank you, Ethan. Sorry, Paul. Question. And a question that I've heard from others, how will this impact taxes from townsfolk?
I I encourage folks to look at what's what, how the Community Preservation Act Fund works. It was something that the town had previously, it's a state law that towns can voluntarily opt into. They have to have a, I think it's a two-thirds majority vote at the town meeting. So years ago, Hadley decided to do that. So there's a portion of our tax, property taxes that go into this fund. There's an elected body, the Community Preservation Act, that gets to adjudicate recommendations on how to spend those funds. And it has to be approved at town meeting. So they have, we met with them several times. They were wonderful, asked frankly, hard questions, very thoughtful questions. And in the end, they decided to recommend that the project gets approved. So now it's up to the town. From what I understand, right, is this this project alone does not change the allocation, the percentage of our property taxes that'll go into the Community Preservation Act.
Great, thank you. This is an exciting phase. And, you know, I I've been on the school committee for a dozen years. And I remember our, you know, many moons ago, the composition looked totally different. My four other colleagues on the committee were totally different. And we really, it took quite a while to get us to this point. And we're, I'm really grateful to you, Paul, for bringing us, you know, project managing and fundraising and really pulling together all the pieces. And I'm really excited to see Phase Two to completion. And one thing you mentioned was the trustees' involvement. In fact, the trustees purchased the land for us and then gifted it to the town for to for our use. And that is, you know, the fact that this is, this is really, that's really, to me, a signal that the community through the Hopkins trustees really wanted this upgrade. And I think it's really important for us to really wanted this upgrade, and I think it's really important for us to help make this happen and bring it over the finish line. So thank you for that. Any other?
Well, just to, just to pick up on that, thank, thank you for the shout out. I will say it's many hands, right? Chris, Annie. The trustees, as you mentioned, have been, not only helped purchase and donate the land, then, but they were very influential in making sure the first phase was completed. East Hampton Savings Bank, multiple, multiple individuals provided donations, so it's, it's really been a community effort.
Thank you to all.
And so, a quick question. So the loop will be completed in this phase? The, the, so the community can all use that, the track for walking and et cetera, correct?
Exactly.
Benefits the community as well?
It definitely does, yeah. And if you go out, I mean, as you've seen, Christine, that, that what's out there now gets lots of use.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
I understand there's also and a component of the safety, the design of the walkway and the path contributes to safety. I think, Annie, you might have been mentioning that to me. Can you say a word about that?
Honestly, Paul would say it better, but it does allow access for emergency response vehicles. And I'm sure we will also be looking at ways that we can create access for people with mobility issues who need to get to that side of the track, which is really challenging right now if you have mobility issues.
Great, thank you. Okay. No action required. We will, but we urge all our team members to attend town meeting this Thursday, 7:00 PM at Hopkins Academy. I urge parents and community members to come out to Hopkins Academy for that meeting and to, to help support the Fields project. And thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move on to capital, Christine, and negotiations, by the way, so you get a double header from you.
Right, well, the negotiations we will talk about in executive session. And then the capital, we have two things on there. One is the upgrade to the safety, the fire safety, the fire apparatus, and the second is the ceiling tiles, which both are going to be presented at a town meeting. So both are safety issues. They're not, it's not something that is on our want list, it's on our need list. So you know, we, not something we could have prepared for, but something that has to be done.
Great, thank you, Christine. All right, and, and that too is up for town meeting approval?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Very good, thank you. Another reason to come out, supporters of the schools. Okay, we're going to move next to announcements. We have Joyce Chunglo here with us. Joyce, welcome. Any announcements on behalf of the select board?
I don't have anything. I was just going to say, please come out for a town meeting. I've always been a strong supporter of the school system. I think, listening tonight, you have many initiatives and things that you have done that are great, just even for the start of the year, but also what has happened with your MCAS and things like that. So again, I am very proud, even though it's been a long time. I won't say how many that I was on school committee, but school committee has always been on the top of my list. The, the students are our future. So there are many things that I appreciate. So come out for town meeting. This is everybody's town. Everything that we do is for everybody, and again, we need to all come out, support the school, support the highway department, which plows our yards and does all of those things for us. So, you know, that, that was the main crux of, of tonight. Me being a nurse and still in the field, I'm, I'm out there saying that there is an uptake of COVID. So us to be diligent about how we prepare ourselves and do things and make sure that if you have any signs or symptoms, please be aware of getting checked and not just going to school thinking that you're okay. Just be aware of everybody that you come in contact with too, so I'm one of those supporters, but great job, everybody. Really enjoyed your meeting tonight, and, and thank you for doing what you do. I appreciate it all. And we, whole town does, but you need to hear that because I don't think everybody gets out there and says that to you, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Joyce.
Very kind, thank you.
I just want to quickly remind people on the calendar for May, Humira, this week, parent conferences, Hadley Elementary School. That means Hadley Elementary School has a half day, 26, 27, 28. Hadley Elementary School, 26, 27, 28, all three days, early dismissal. At Hopkins Academy, half day Friday only, because they have only one night of parent-teacher conferences. And those parent-teacher conferences are occurring on the evening of the 27th, but people can, if you have a parent-teacher conference scheduled, do your conference, go over to town meeting. You don't have to be there right at the start, or you can come in at any time and sign in, so just wanted to make sure people are aware of the calendar and the half days this week.
Great, thank you. And do any of my school committee colleagues have any announcements to make? Okay, I have one, which is that Hadley Learns is having an event on November 3rd called Housing for Hadley, and we have two special guest speakers, including Rosatobin of the Massachusetts Fair Housing Center, and Alexis Britney Scher of the Valley CDC. We'll also be talking about the Hadley Housing Survey and the results of that. There's a YouTube link on the Hadley Learns event page, so just go to hadleylearns.com, and you'll see a number of resources in the events section that you can read up on or listen to before this November 3rd event on Zoom at 7:00 PM Eastern. There's an RSVP link. If you complete that, you get the Zoom link. So take a look at that. All right, we have some additional items to pass. We have an approval of minutes.
Humira, Joyce, do you want to say something?
Just a quick thing, a fun thing for our kids. There is trunk or treat happening Friday night, so just want people to be aware. And there's been just a little change in the venue that you can park at the Hadley Elementary School, and they have on their website, they have put out how you can come over to the police station for kids to wear their costumes and actually be able to walk from trunk to trunk and actually, instead of driving through. So if people want to do that, that's a little bit different this year too, so just to let people out to know that. So always good to have fun things too.
Yeah, I actually was going to mention that because I'll actually be there in costume.
All right. Excellent. Thank you for sharing that, Joyce.
Are you going to give it away, Christine? Do we have to guess?
It's definitely going to be a pun. I tend to like my pun costumes.
All right.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Yes. Excellent, very funny. Okay. Now we're going to move on to the remaining action items. We have the approval of minutes, September 12th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, terrific. We have the approval of executive session minutes for August 22, 2022.
I make a motion?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have the approval of the warrants for September 2022. And is this the one where we no longer have an abstention on this, do we?
That's correct. Everybody can.
Okay, terrific. So do I hear a motion to approve the warrants?
Sure, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, terrific. We've already approved the district wellness policy. We've already approved the district strategy and the 22, 23 priorities. Our next meeting date is November 28th at 5:30 for the regular school committee meeting, and 4:30 for the policy subcommittee. We are moving into executive session, and we will all leave this room, convene in a breakout room, and then we will return back. So I'm going to move here, move to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and to reconvene in open session. So I will go ahead and make that breakout room, and
I will have to do a roll call too. You have to.
That's right. Pfeiffer?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. Percy?
Yes.
Pipchinsky?
Yes.
And Fasidin, yes? Terrific. We are returning from executive session and are voting on the bus contract. We need a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, the motion is to approve the settlement agreement, correct? Yes.
That is correct. Do I hear a motion for, to approve the settlement?
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, and now we need a roll call vote. Start with Percy.
Yes.
Pipchinsky?
Yes.
Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Fasidin, yes. Motion passes. All right, everyone?
Thank you.
And we will see you again next month.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. Yes, Paul?
Oh, there's that. We should do that, yeah.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.